Okay, welcome everyone, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
President Hammond here. Vice President Daley.
Here.
Trustee Clements.
Here.
Trustee Hedlund.
Here.
Trustee Parr.
Here.
Thank you.
I'll start. Thank you, Ms. Hammond. It's been a very sad couple of weeks for our community. As the Board knows and many members of our community know, we lost a beloved teacher in Lori Isler on December 30th. And as I said, Lori was beloved by our entire school community. She taught here for over 30 years. Lori was a graduate of Haldane. She cared deeply for our students and for her colleagues, and they cared very deeply for her. I did not have the opportunity to get to know Lori very well, but over the past two weeks, I've heard many stories of her kindness, her graciousness, her professionalism, and in many ways, we're still mourning and well for a long time, I feel. So with that, we'd like to have a moment of silence in memory of Lori. Just in addition to that, Ms. Hammond, I'd be remiss if I didn't also, and as I know the Board would like to as well, just acknowledge the Griffin family. Mr. Aaron Griffin passed away suddenly last week as well, and I want the Board to know we've reached out to the family and certainly sent our condolences and offered any support that we can offer at this time. Mr. Griffin had two kids in the school, and again, we've reached out and we've made sure the family knows that they have our full support.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. I just also want to add a few words. I want to thank the entire community for really all the support, and it's really a testament of what type of community we're in and how everybody comes together in times of need, and it was truly appreciated. We also want to thank our friends at Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES, as well as the regional crisis team for all their assistance and support that they provided to our district during this difficult time.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to remind everyone that the next meeting of the Board of Ed is scheduled for January 22nd, 7:00 PM in the band room here, and we'll see you in two weeks.
A few just announcements on my end. A reminder for the Board that we will have our joint meeting with the Garrison Board on Tuesday, February 5th, which is one of our regularly scheduled meetings. The location of that meeting is still to be determined. I have to still work that through with Laura Mitchell and Garrison. Also, a reminder that our winter board retreat is February 1st, Friday, from 5:00 to 9:00 at Winter Hill. We've reserved that space, so we're looking forward to that, and John McCarthy and Lynn Allen will be facilitating that from Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES.
Do you know what the Garrison meeting will be looking like in terms of content? Will it be our usual discussion about Haldane High School pretty much for them and answering their questions about Haldane High School?
Yes.
And, okay.
Yeah, all of that. And Ms. Sniffen and I went through the outline of that presentation. It's largely done because she's providing a similar presentation to the parents of Garrison who will actually be here tomorrow night, I believe, of incoming eighth graders coming into ninth grade. And so, yes, I believe it's pretty consistent with what's been done in the past. It's been modified based on some feedback from the Garrison Board of Education on what specific information they're interested in seeing, but I think roughly it's very similar to what's been presented in the past.
And will we be having students there? Do you know about that piece?
Yes. Ms. Sniffen and I talked about having a few former Garrison students present. We'll present a lot of data, but we are anticipating that the Garrison Board members may have a few questions for former Garrison students, and we wanted to have a few kids there who are available to answer those questions.
Great.
Okay. I also just wanted to mention that the water damage remediation project was complete over the course of the holiday break. Ms. Dineo had mentioned that some time ago, that that was the anticipated schedule. We will go ahead and upload, it should be in there now if you're in the live Board docs, under public information, the summary report that was provided by the group that completed the project. The good news is the scope of the remediation was not as great as we had initially thought or as they had initially thought, so they were actually able to do, complete the project in less time, which I believe should equate to less money. So, we'll see when the bill comes. And again, that final report is available for the public or will be once this is live.
It's there.
It should be. We just uploaded that today, a few hours ago. And finally, some happy news. Mr. Salem, who I mentioned was expecting twins.
Ohhh.
There they are. All right. It's the Salem family, which doubled in size Sunday night. So Chris and his wife Gloria, Gloria gave birth to twins, and there's little Christopher and Sophia are the two Salem twins here.
I thought you were going to say Christopher and Gloria.
The family's doing very well. Chris is doing well. We're looking forward to his return, and right now, he's enjoying being dad.
Nice.
So that was the sixth?
That was Sunday evening.
For the sixth?
Yes.
Nice.
Exciting times. He's glowing. Congratulations to everyone.
It's an exciting time, to say the least. And that concludes my remarks. I think at this time, we're going to transition to our next budget presentation, if that's okay.
That's right.
All right, and I will swing over next to Margaret, it looks like.
Oh, is that what you'd rather go?
Well, Anne will present there.
So he's not right in the way.
So tonight's presentation is about the administrative and capital components of our budget. If, as you know, there's three components to the final budget. There's administrative, capital, and instructional. Tonight, we're going to review the capital and, or the administrative and the capital components of the budget, and also discuss two propositions, the annual vehicle proposition and the capital referendum. So the administrative component consists of these functions. So the way that our budget is organized, it's by account code, it's driven by account codes, and primarily, it is regarding functions. So the functions that are contained in the administrative part of the budget are what you see on this slide. Now, within each function are different objects, and I'm just going to use an example. In the office of the superintendent function, it's not just the superintendent's salary that you see when you look at a total line item. It's everything that drives the superintendent's office. It's clerical support, it's contractual items, it's conferences, it's workshops, it's material and supplies. So when I say the office of the superintendent, it's everything in his department, not just salary. Again, the same is true for finance in the business office. There's payroll, there's accounts payable, it's even the software that runs payroll and taxes. It's all of the items, all the expenditures for each of these functions. The instructional administration, that is the salaries of the building principals, the dean of students. Our dean of student is also the athletic director, so it's a prorated portion that is allocated to this category, the related clerical support, and all the costs related to these offices. So those are the components that make up the administrative component of the budget. It's about 12% to 13% of the entire budget. This slide represents the trends over past years and the projections. You'll see that there are actual expenditures for 15, 16, 16, 17, and 17, 18. Our current year budget is 18, 19, so there's the original budget figure in that column. I've projected out the expenditures through the end of the year. Again, it's, we're only halfway through the year, so that could change. And the proposed 19, 20. Keep in mind that proposal one is, we haven't discussed that yet, it's not complete, so the figures that you're seeing in the 19, 20 column are the rollover budget figures, but for comparison.
Can we go through and then come back, or do you want me to ask questions now? Let's go through. You don't want me to start asking questions now?
Actually, Anne, I'm just going to ask, could you explain the Board, I think we ask this question every year, the Board of Education. Sorry, the Board of Education line, could you explain some of that as BOCES?
None of that's our salary.
None of it's salary.
Well, yeah, your salary is included in there. Your salary of zero is included in there. But it's everything to run, even running the election.
Correct.
So if I go back, it's conferences and workshops that the school board may attend, it's any materials and supplies, it's the district clerk expenses, her salary, and any expenses, workshops that she may go to. It's the district meeting, it's a budget vote, the trustee election, paying for the voting machines and the election workers. Thanks. There's a lot of expenses, and that's all under school board costs.
Thank you.
May I make a, I don't know if I want to make a recommendation, but just propose something to consider. Before you post these, right, because all of these will be posted on the school's website, I would consider putting an asterisk by the $24,934,291 to indicate that this is not the proposed budget, that this is the rollover budget, because I think for people, I don't know how many people pick this kind of thing up and look at it, but I, yeah.
That's fine. I think, Anne, on this spreadsheet, if I'm not mistaken, because we made a notation on the next slide or one of the slides that follows, where we can make a note right below the, right below the spreadsheet itself and highlight particular areas, and that way, folks understand that.
Or even just call it, instead of proposed 19, 20, it could be called rollover.
Correct.
Well, except the whole column isn't rollover. The only thing that's rollover is this number right here. Everything else, those numbers right there for the different components aren't necessarily rollover numbers, they may reflect.
Wait.
Or am I wrong about that?
Could you take a moment and describe what we're looking at for 19, 20 versus 18, 19?
We have the budget for 18, 19.
Yep.
Which was approved by the voters.
Yep.
The projected 18, 19 expenditures through the end of the year.
Yep.
And the proposed 19, 20 represents rollover budget figures.
Oh, it is rollover.
So those are rollover budget, Board of Education function, office of the superintendent functions, and the $24,934,291 is the total budget, rollover budget, because we don't have proposal one yet. But I certainly can change that to rollover 19, 20, if that will help.
So the delta between budget 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020, the only thing that has changed are the things that we discussed last time, which were primarily employee-based salaries, benefits, salaries and benefits.
Correct. And any benefit, yeah, but the benefits that we know.
Yeah. So there's no either programmatic change, which wouldn't be in this piece at all, or we need additional 5,000 for more law books.
We're not at that point yet. That's proposal one, which we haven't discussed.
So the budget, okay, the total change 19, 20 over 18, 19 projected is a little wonky because 18, 19 projected is all in rollover and all the other changes that we've made, and the 19, 20 is just rollover, meaning it's just employee expense increases. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I misunderstood. I actually assumed that these numbers might have already included some things that may be, just because the changes from the budget to 20, 19, 20 were so variable, I had actually assumed it might have included some things that you already, that you had already wanted to include and wasn't necessarily straight rollover.
Not necessarily, although several of these lines, I would not anticipate much of a change between now and proposal one, because they often reflect relatively stable or costs that are relatively easy to project into next school year with little change.
Right. If you look at the percent of budget, the very last line, you see that they are stable amounts, there's no spikes, and there's no, and we don't anticipate any surprises to the end of the year in these categories. Certainly, if it will help, if you think that this is a useful slide, first of all, I can change proposed 19, 20 to rollover 19, 20, and going forward, if you want to see how it changes in relation, you know, we could put proposal one, 19, 20 up there so that you can know which slide you're looking at, if you like this information.
I think that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you also detail, Anne, the special items?
Special items are insurance, student accident insurance, liability insurance. We have a figure in there for anticipated tax surchiaries, refunds for that, district membership dues, BOCES administrative costs. Those are all in special items, but they're in the administrative portion.
Is that anywhere, that detail, for anybody to see, who is actually looking at this?
Yes, in the budget document itself, from year to year, these expenditures don't really change, the titles of the functions, the detail within each function might change, like we might go from 12 maintenance workers to 14 maintenance workers, and that would be in the description, but the description, bless you, the description of what's in each category, if you look at any final budget document.
Right, but I mean, right now, in this process, they would have to pull up the final budget document from 18, 19.
Correct.
And cross-reference.
Correct.
Yeah.
Anne and I have talked about in looking at how some other districts, again, in the spirit of transparency, or just educating the community who would want to know on any given line what's included in that, either changing the format of how a master spreadsheet perhaps is formulated, where you could hover over it and see a description that pops up. If you're hovering over administration or special items, you'd see a brief description of what that includes, or having a companion or an addendum to each of the budget presentations right along there, so you could look it up instead of having to go back to the previous year. I don't know if we'll be able to get there quite in this year's budget process, but I do think that would be a best practice. So folks, what central services, you know, the lay community member isn't, I would not assume would know what that is or what's included in it, but there would be a readily accessible way for them to come to understand what that includes as their information. So long-term, that's the goal. I don't know, again, if we'll be able to do it as we're going along here, because we're changing some things with how we're approaching this and...
I noticed that on this first slide, it's a little, I like it.
Okay.
Good, good.
I like it too. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Moving on to the capital component, which, as you can see, are a lot fewer lines on this. Operations and maintenance function, again, is a broad title. It includes salaries of cleaners, maintenance, and support staff. It's also the cost of operating the entire campus. All the utilities are in this category, the fuel oil, the electricity, projects, repairs, maintenance of grounds. This is, interestingly enough, this is also the category where our school resource officer and the peace officer is paid out of, and I just, probably because it was process of elimination, it didn't really fit anywhere else, so the state gave it a code in operations and maintenance. So you might notice a jump that would be out of the ordinary for this last year and this year, and that's because we've added another position, we added the peace officer. The debt service, our bond principal and interest costs, including the bond anticipation notes that we refer to often, and those are the short-term debt instruments that we pay off within five years. If you don't pay a bond anticipation note within five years, you have to bond it. And interfund transfers, we'll get into on the next slide, because that could probably be a little bit more confusing. So that's why I highlighted it in yellow, so that we could talk about that. The other items, same as the administrative component comparison, the three years of actual expenditures, the budget, the projected, and the proposed, which is, again, rollover figures. So if you look at what's highlighted in yellow, those are interfund transfers. So in the years where there's actual expenditures, 15, 16, 16, 17, 17, 18, they're very large numbers. What's originally budgeted is the $90,000, and the $90,000 is our 20, it adds up to our $20,000 of, for the cafeteria for operating, it's our local share operating contribution. It's 20% of the summer special education costs that we're required to pay, any programs that we would send students to over the summer. The state reimburses us 80%, but it's up to the district to pay 20. And then there's the interfund transfer we budget for the repair fund. That was the intent ever since we built the turf field, was if we got any fees for the turf field, we would transfer it to the repair fund for future carpet replacement. So at the end of the year, everybody remembers that we have, if we have excess fund balance over our 4%, we've been transferring that to the capital fund or the capital reserve fund. At the end of the year, the interfund transfers are adjusted by those transfers, and that's why in those three years, you see the $90,000 has grown because we increased our interfund transfers with excess fund balance. I still have everyone?
With you. Roughly.
Okay. And again, stable, they're stable numbers. If you look at the percent of budget, it's very consistent. There aren't any surprises.
Just a quick question on that. Yes, they're stable. Both have been growing over the course of the past, since 15, 16. So this is the first two, there are three parts to the budget, right? This is one and two, and then there's program?
There's program.
Okay. So, coming from, when I was in nonprofit fundraising, we always wanted to make the percent that you spent on overhead go down, and the percent that you dedicated towards the program go up. So if I looked at this cynically, I would say the percent that's going towards capital and admin is going up, and the percent that's going to program is going down. Now, I'm sure there's good reason for that, so I'll ask, what's the reason for that?
I always want to let Anne answer first.
You're like going to take a big breath and see if she jumps in.
How did you figure, how did you determine that the percentage towards program is going down? Where did you come up?
Because, okay, so this is 1%, this is 15%, it has gone from 13 to 15. The previous one has gone from 10 to 13, so that's a 3% delta. So 3% on $25 million is $750,000, which I would love to put towards program. And there's a lot in program, which is also employee benefits and all that sort of stuff. So I guess...
I think on the administrative end, one thing that just comes to mind is we don't, as a smaller school system, realize some economy of scale.
Right.
The way other districts may. So it's not unusual in a smaller school system to see the administrative component as a higher proportion of your total cost in comparison to the other two program areas, or the other two areas, excuse me, the capital and the program. So that's initially what comes to mind. Again, Anne, if you can go back to the slide, please, for the administrative piece.
I think that makes sense as a, if I compare the percentage, percentage here versus the percentage at a big school district, I would expect admin here to be bigger. I'm just, I'm interested in the trend.
Right. So the trend, I'd have to give a little more time and thought to, because as I, Anne and I certainly went through this, and some things jump out in terms of our spending, but it could be dictated by a contractual benefit. For example, at the end of 17, 18, you see a bump in the office of the superintendent, and part of that's driven by a contractual benefit, maybe unused vacation time.
Right.
That's being paid out as one superintendent leaves. So that's just one example, and other benefits that come out. So I say these lines are a little more sensitive to just one individual at times, which can drive that if there's a personnel change, which in a larger budget, it wouldn't...
Get absorbed.
Yeah, it would be absorbed.
Yeah.
So that's just an initial thought that jumps out at me. You know, when I look at the total budget in 18, 19, and that we're likely to, we were at, we were budgeted at 2.8 roughly, 2.79, 2.8 if I'm rounding up, and next year, we're budgeting at 2.85. It's not a significant increase when you consider all of the work that's going in in these areas comparatively, but it would be something that we would need to sit with a little bit longer to think about what's influencing the costs.
All right, just from an optics perspective, the other thing is like, they're both going up faster than our overall budget will.
Right.
Period, end of story.
Agreed.
We're still in rollover.
Yep.
Right, so we're still in like, this is all going to move.
Correct.
But from an optics perspective, they're like, we're pouring, we're putting more money into admin cap, right?
We want to, we want to keep everything close to the 2% or 2.5%, whatever our tax cap is.
Right.
Especially the costs that we can control directly.
Right.
So, understood.
And on that note, since I haven't completed the grid for the program part...
I'm sure that one's going to go, yeah.
Well, I would want to, I would want to see, does it add up to 100?
Right.
Because I'm allocating employee benefits to each of the three components.
Yeah, yeah.
It should, but I want to see how the percentages are in relation.
Yep.
So I think that I want to talk about that then.
Just to clarify, Anne's percent increase there of 7.13% is the percent increase from where we're projected to what's proposed or what's being rolled over.
Right.
We're projected lower because we're not spending what we budgeted this year. So I think perhaps a more, I don't know, fair is the wrong term, is to go from what we budgeted in 18, 19 to what we're rolling over in 19, 20. Because if you notice, we're projected to be over $130,000 under budget this year, right now, and that's being, that's what the difference is that Anne's accounting for. I think maybe we should be looking at the budget for 18, 19, because that's what we budgeted for, versus what we're budgeting for potentially for 19, 20.
And realize, this is still rollover. This is still like, everything we know is going to happen, and then you roll in programmatic stuff and things you actually want to change, but...
Right. But that number is much more closer to 2% than, you know, the fact that we're underspending in certain areas this year. The question then becomes if we're not spending as much as we had anticipated in 18, 19, should our rollover budget be reflective of what we spent this year, or should it be reflective of what we had budgeted for this year? And there's some questions that we have to resolve with that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Do you still understand where I'm coming from? Okay.
And this is good, because we've, you've never seen this slide before. And this is good, because we've, you've never seen this slide before. This is new, and so it's good that you're picking out things to just make it useful. You know, if it's not a useful slide, then we change it to, it's not like we used it last year and we know what you like and what you didn't like, so that's good.
This is much more organized, and I'm more appreciative of this type of slide. So some of these things may be popping out, and I know there's answers.
Right, well, it brings out good questions, so that's good.
You know, one thing that I thought about on the next slide where we were, where John initially brought this up, is you mentioned two things, an increase because of the peace officer. This component is highly driven by overtime as well, right? Well, depending on the drivers and the, you know, overtime activities.
Overtime is in there, and we've had the reorganization.
And the reorg. So those were two things that popped out.
Right. So even though, and still, when I did the projection, the reorganization was budget neutral. We talked about positions that were lost, or that people had retired and changing them to new ones. This could get better because it's hoped that the reorganization is going to address the need for a lot of the overtime that's happening that was really too much. We were relying on it.
And some of it was good overtime. I mean, we took two...
Oh, absolutely.
You know, teams to space. Oh, sorry. So in retrospect, we get it, you know, we did have some additional expenses, but well worth it.
I also, and I don't, not to be cantankerous, but I'm not sure that I would, I'm not sure, not this slide, but the administrative component, I'm not sure, even though it's called administration, I don't think it's administration in the same way that I might think of administration in a nonprofit. I would think of the office of the superintendent, even though it falls outside of, for example, the program component as solidly part of the, you know, of the educational program. Certainly some of it may be, you know, like, when I say administrative staff, I mean administrative assistant-type staff, but like, Phil's job is, is running the educational system of the district. The principal's job is to, is to run and oversee and develop the programmatic component. So, not that I disagree with you completely, but I don't see this as administration in the same way. I might see it as administration in a different kind of organization.
That's fair. From my understanding, the principals are not in here.
Yes, they're administration.
The principals under administration.
Are they?
Yeah, they're administration.
And I didn't devise this, this is the controller's office, and this is the way that the, this is state-mandated, three-part budget, it's called. And they, the state and the controller's office dictate by budget code what belongs in each component.
Right. Yeah.
But it's a great observation also, I mean, to see how as the, as a percentage of the budget, it's changed over time. That's not something I've noticed before, and that's a really, that's a great thing for us to have in mind as we, as we look at this and think about it.
Can I say one more thing about the way it shows? So, under the budget and the projected for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, the number is the same, but the percentage is different. So when you look at the bottom, even though I can tell that number is probably the same, is my guess, because you're, the total, you just moved that number from budget to projected, but see how the percentages are different?
Mm-hmm.
So that eleven point six is actually of the two seven nine six two oh.
Correct.
And the eleven point oh eight is the two six six seven six seven, but see how, like, they're, since they're paired together, it feels like it should match, and that's in both slides.
Yeah, a little confusing. Yeah.
Oh, so that's a good point.
When you put out data, people lock onto it.
We'll look at that before we take this on the road.
Like, if I looked at that, I would like, I would look at that side.
I need one more.
Your math's wrong.
That's a good point, Margaret.
You need to like, move them over one more.
Right.
The bottom.
No, she wants the projected eighteen, nineteen budget total to reflect the current projection of less than twenty-four seventy-three ninety-two. Right? Because if we're projecting that eighteen, nineteen, we're spending less than we thought we were going to with our budget, then if we end up spending less, what would the total be? The total wouldn't be twenty-four seventy-three ninety-two.
Actually, it doesn't add up. That's probably just...
Right? The total would be less than that.
Right.
Well, but it's, it's still the, it's not necessarily the money that we spend, but it's still the budget, that's the amount of money that we are going to do something with at the end of the year.
But if that was the case, then those two numbers would be the same. The percentages would be the same.
No, they wouldn't, because the projection's going down. The two six six seven is a smaller portion of the twenty-four.
Correct.
Oh, seven oh.
But to Margaret's point, it's confusing.
So there's a fourth component, which is slush.
It's called excess fund balance.
That's going to be your fund balance. Sorry, that's a technical term.
We don't use that word.
I know, it's a technical term.
That makes it seem like there's fluff.
I know.
Which there isn't.
There's not.
So then, on that note, the fifteen percent...
The same.
And the fourteen point six seven, same thing, because of the smaller amount of, under total, as compared to budget. That's a percentage of the total of the slide to budget on each line. But keep in mind that at the end of the year, if there's excess fund balance, that ninety thousand dollars is going to change.
Right.
There's going to be an actual column, and that's going to change.
Because you're going to transfer.
And that percentage is going to go up then.
Right.
Right.
Shall I move on?
Sorry.
If you dare. No, that's okay. I just want to make sure we're comfortable, if there's no more questions. Okay, so we're going to move right into proposition two, which is our vehicle purchase. And this year, we've identified that there's one bus that needs replacement. It's a thirty-passenger school bus. The one that, the bus that we bought with last May's vote is really useful. It's going, it's in between. We usually get a twenty-two passenger bus when we get a small van, and the sixty-six passenger bus is just too big. This is really coming in handy for sports trips and that, because we don't have to run the big bus. The second item on this list is a maintenance vehicle. It's a smaller ATV with a dump body and accessories that will help with snow removal, will also help with maintenance around the campus, and this will save wear and tear on our Kubota, which we use to move some equipment and materials, and it's really, it's a big vehicle to use for some of the smaller jobs. So this will definitely be useful.
You don't have to answer this question now. When do we anticipate the propane buses being replaced? You don't have to answer that, because I know the use on the propane buses isn't as useful as maybe one of these thirty passengers, but maybe it's something to look into to see how much longer those will be on our...
Right, those are going, we've discussed this, and we have two of them. The first one, we got with a grant, which really, it only cost us a few thousand dollars, I think at the time. It might have been fifteen thousand for the big bus. And at the time, it was very popular, and we were, oh, this is great, we're going to reduce our footprint, let's get another propane bus, so we bought a van, a propane. Then we realized that there's not a whole lot of places to fill up, and it doesn't get as the range for the bus. You have to make sure you're not going too far with it, or you might not get back. And we don't have a filling station on campus for it, so we didn't buy anymore. There are, right, certain trips. You can't send it out on every trip. But we're looking into, you know, could we get more use out of a gas-powered or a diesel? Absolutely. So when they're ready, they're going to be traded in, and we'll, we'll get a nice trade-in value for them. We're still getting some use out of them. And it's nice because the repair on the propane bus is less than on a gas-powered engine. The propane does last longer. It needs less repair, it's clean, because it runs cleaner.
Right.
But we have discussed that, that they're not as useful as we thought they were going to be. It didn't catch on, you know, it just really didn't.
Well, the gas stations didn't catch on, you know, because they could be making some money.
Right, and if there was, if there was places for us to fill them on a sports trip, then we would take them. But it's just cumbersome, you don't want to be stuck.
But the point I was getting at is, these thirty passengers, if we're finding these to be more useful, you know...
They are. We like to have a varied fleet.
I guess we have to wait our turn.
We have to, we have to wait a little bit. The propane, the propane buses are still, we're still getting some use out of them. We're not going to propose that we buy anymore unless things change where we can fill them up. But we also have to make sure we have enough of the big buses, too.
Right.
So it's nice that we have a varied fleet. It's coming in handy. So proposition three is our capital referendum. And our Buildings and Grounds Committee worked very hard on narrowing, helping us to narrow down our list. And the items on the list seem to swirl around health and safety, and our facilities, and program improvement, and these are overlapping because although items on the list made it into these three categories, someone could argue that, well, that belongs on the other list, but they all affect each other. They really do. So as you'll see, as we go through the list of items that we're proposing to include in this referendum, you'll see that they're, they're in categories because of an opinion. So the items under health and safety, first one we've been talking about for a long time, that's to move the electrical panel from the pump room. And just the words alone should tell you.
Why this is a good idea?
Why this is a good idea. The bus lift hasn't always been on the list. It recently, we found out that it needs repair. We had someone come in today, actually, to do an assessment on it, and I'll have a discussion with Nabil tomorrow. I just want to let you know, I wouldn't be surprised to see this come off of this list, and we come to the board for maybe another public hearing to use repair fund, repair reserve fund money for this, because I don't know that it can wait. It's a, it's a real safety issue.
What's the bus lift? Is that to lift like a wheelchair into?
No, that's to actually lift the bus.
Oh, lift the bus up to get underneath it, to work on it?
Yes.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay. The ceiling tile replacement in Mabel Merritt Building. There's slight asbestos percentage in the ceiling tiles. Because there's any at all, it needs to be an abatement project, so we can't really do any work or any changes, we can't put up any temporary walls because of that, and it's, it's just time to do this so that we could, we could use that first floor in a better way. Access to the second floor mechanicals in the high school. I think we talked about this before, that when we have to get up to the second floor, or the third floor in the high school, we have to put a ladder up, take a ceiling tile off. This isn't doing any big renovation, except getting a more permanent ladder in a safer place, one that we can use. It's permanently affixed to a wall, but it's also locked so that people just can't climb up there whenever. If something were to happen up in the mechanical room in the high school, we would definitely need, you know, to have someone come in to get access up there. This isn't going to solve all the problems, bless you, but it will certainly help with safety for our guys when they need to go up there. Replacing the cafeteria air handling units, the water heater replacement, the cafeteria kitchen equipment, the flooring out here that we all looked at on our tour, and the table replacement, we've talked about this. It's the original equipment and the original ovens in the kitchen. They're dangerous at times. The freezer freezes shut, and we can't open it. We talked about how we've had to bring food elsewhere for storage while it gets replaced. This is all part of the referendum. Guide rails along Craig Side Drive. This is the slope going down to the turf field, putting guardrails, guide rails, whatever the term, whoever wants to call it whatever, up along Craig Side Drive. Window screens in the, in the middle school, so that they can open up the windows and get fresh air without bees coming in. All of the items on this list, under health and safety, are really going to be addressed after our security audit and based on the recommendations. I know that we've been discussing some of the items on this list for some time, and we have some quotes. These upgrades are expensive, so without clear specifications and suggestions, instead of diving right into any one of them, decided to wait, and after the audit, and we know what the recommendations are, to make thoughtful decisions on, on systems that talk to each other, and that aren't standalone systems wasting our money.
When are we expecting that audit to be available?
It'll begin before the month ends, and I talked to Mr. LaBlaca, who was here, about the turnaround time, so the audit itself will happen fairly quickly. It's the report that we're going to be waiting for, and he understands that we may have an opportunity here to include and address some of the recommendations that are made through this project. So he's indicated he'll make every effort to make sure the written audit process is expedited, so we get that as quickly as possible, so we can review it and determine if there's anything from it we want to try to include in this. There are a few things, as Ann is saying, though, we know need to be done. We know our cameras need to be upgraded. We know our phone system needs to be upgraded. Door access is an issue. Staley, you and I were actually talking about that in one of our, as we walked by each other today, because there was an issue with the door not shutting properly. So those are things that are going to show up in the audit, but we can already account for in our planning.
Okay. The visitor management system was what we discussed last year. Is that what...
Scholarship?
Scholarship, or...
Yes, yes.
Something similar?
Yeah, something similar as well.
Right, the issue with, not an issue, but the piece we have to really work through with Alteris is most visitor management systems now have an integration with your camera system. So I think we alluded to this perhaps a couple of months ago when we talked about it. We just want to make sure, whatever steps we're taking with a visitor management system, we're not doing work that we're going to have to come back to. We want to make sure if systems can be integrated, that we're, we're accounting for that in replacement or upgrade.
Right, and that the right choice is made, you know, and we can implement it properly.
That sounds good.
Just, a two quick, and maybe I'm jumping the gun, because I, so the recommendations on this are going to be coming post-Alteris, so I'm assuming costs are also indetermined. Maybe it's a question for, at the end, are we setting up, aiming towards a number, and then some of the components will flex depending on, A, what we need to do, B, what the costs are to hit? Is that kind of the, okay, great.
That is good.
Yes, I do think we're, it is going to be something we can discuss as well, though. There will become, there will come a point where we have to lock in.
Yeah.
But I think part of what, how we've been operating is, we want to set this up in a manner, and Ann will get to it momentarily, so that there is as little to no tax impact as possible, which limit, if that's what we're going to stick with, then we obviously are going to make the scope of the work fit into that scenario.
Right. Usually when you have the referendum, you have quotes that you've, that you've received, and you have a target amount. There are some things that you would propose as alternates when you send out the bid, so that depends on when, after the bidding process, when you decide the work, this is the work we definitely want to do, and based on quotes, these are alternates. And based on quotes, these are alternates. Number one would be done first, then number two, if we have room in that, when, when the financing is ultimately done. And that is, you know, first you present the referendum and that's what the voters will vote on. That yes, this is the scope of work.
Right.
But it's not until a year later that you're sending out bids. And you know what you can really, what you can really afford.
And prices may change dramatically in that year.
Prices may change, they may be to our benefit, they may not. So we have our, if you would, our wish list.
Yeah.
And the details can come with more discussion about, all right, what's going to be an alternate that might have to wait till next time or, you know, we still have two years left before we're going to do any financing. And we'll get to that when we look at the, the scope and the, the source of funds. There might be excess fund balance over the next two years that you might want to put toward this as well. So there's, there's still more discussions, but right now, just to, um, have the proposition to get the approval to move forward with the scope of work.
Okay, great, thank you.
So on this referendum is the full window replacement in the elementary school, including the sills and the stairwell curtain wall and the exterior doors. And I know that we talked several times about, well, can we just replace the sills or repair the sills? How long are those egress windows? Uh, we, we made some modifications to them. And with, after all of the research and the, the discussions with, uh, people who, you know, windows are their, their expertise, we could maybe get five more years investing and doing a partial repair. But that's only five years. So spending that money and spending more on it and getting a full replacement, you know, five years from now, we might be talking about another referendum for other things. We don't have to talk about the windows anymore. Cause we've been talking about them for years, for a long time. So, um, incorporated in this is just having them all replaced and upgraded and, and, you know.
And not falling out anymore?
Not falling out, yeah, that would be good. The playground equipment, again, it's not a new playground that we're proposing. This is to replace the swing sets which have been out there, you know.
Since Laura was in school.
Laura was swinging on them in first grade.
Relocated, actually, they were just pushed up higher, but I think they are the same swings.
The same swings.
And Nabil was saying that they, they pop out of the ground.
They pop out, yeah, so that could be an extra ride.
I've seen them pop out many times. They may not be sized for you, just to put a. I wasn't on it, but.
The paving project that we're talking about is, um, right, uh, outside the bell lot, down to, um, the end of the cafeteria lot where Craig Side, where the, the residential area stops. That really, really needs to be repaved, so that's incorporated in this referendum as well. Fencing, uh, mostly out here where I think that when we were on our walk, we may have, did we look over at the fence that was, um, I think I was with the superintendent? We didn't this year. It's the same fence, just a little rustier.
And actually, there's a new improvement to it. There's a golf club cover that's covering the pointiest part of it. And I sent Dr. Bernante a picture and said, this is the latest addition to this dilapidated fence.
So that's why it's on the list. Some storage building, um, upgrades so that we can keep our equipment safe and make it last longer.
When we got talked, I'm sorry, just to back up to the paving, when, are you also, I feel like we've talked about paving where there, there's that kind of like unofficial little parking lot that happens, um, when there's overspill by the eagle. And then we've talked in the past of making that real parking space and like paving it and, is that part of that paved down?
Right out here, right?
Yeah.
That's the area you're talking about.
Yeah, it's kind of this unofficial gravel hill place that people spill over to.
We, we've talked about it.
I know when the show, uh, gets close to the performances, you'll sometimes have fifteen cars in that unofficial parking lot. It's pretty crazy.
Yeah, we've talked about it, I don't know if that, where that ended up, if it ended up anywhere.
I don't believe that's included in here. Uh, I'd like to talk to Nabil a little more about it, or perhaps Ann and I both can. There are issues in just taking with runoff and whatnot, if you're just looking at a spot and want to pave it, um, that can have some unintended consequences.
Got it.
A couple of years down the, down the line, if you don't incorporate drainage and whatnot to that area, uh, where you get washout and then your, your parking lot starts to, or your paved area starts to crumble. Uh, Nabil tends to have a pretty good take on this sort of thing, so we can run that by him. Another area, uh, we were discussing was, uh, cause I was meeting with some students at the high school about their parking lot, uh, which is just gravel. And whether or not we could do something there. This is a good area, example of an area where costs tend to fluctuate dramatically. Just having paved my own driveway, the cost three years ago versus the cost now, and actually it was in our favor. So I, I think we're going to try to address as much area as we can with what we budget in this area, in, in this. But with the understanding that, um, asphalt, oil-based products can fluctuate pretty significantly in cost, so.
Okay.
Uh, but we'll definitely look at this area in addition to the others that we're thinking about in relation to this project.
Right, it also includes the parking spaces on that, the road heading up to the high school and the parking lot, the, the cafeteria parking lot, not just the roadway itself.
Good, yeah.
And I know we've discussed this, um, in Buildings and Grounds meetings, Craig Side Drive and the responsibilities of Craig Side Drive, part of it as we know is residential. So when you say we're going to pave right up until the residential spot and then residential down is.
Well, I don't think that that's in as bad of shape as, um, what, is that the, the bend, where the bend starts? That's in, uh, more need of repair. And I do not have an answer yet on the, um, who owns, who's responsible, where the line is.
Once we find out, we're going to take a lot of chalk and we're going to draw a line that we're going to re-chalk every few months to make sure it's clear. We never forget where the line is, no. But we are going to figure that out.
Yeah. It takes research, it takes.
I know it's, we've brought this up before, um, but it is what it is.
Painting the auditorium and the gymnasium, that's on there. I think that that will, um, really, uh, complete what project we started last year. The district office in Mabel Merritt Buildings, um, we're proposing some renovations in, in both buildings to create additional educational space and to, um, really separate office from educational space. Window shades, tinting and awnings, this is, um, started with the request from the high school because the, I forget which side, well, I know which side, but I'm trying to figure, is it east? Or which, which facing?
South.
The west, thanks. Is, um, gets really hot on the second floor in the, in that computer room. And also in, um, in different sides of all the buildings, you know, we're going to address where some tinting or shading can help. Climate control and dehumidifiers in shared spaces. This, um, really came to light last summer and into the fall. Those days that were, that were unbearable. And, um, we needed some, some spaces for people to cool off.
Not only that, to take Regents exams.
And to take exams, yes, and, uh, dehumidifiers. So that we don't have, um, the mold issues that other schools were experiencing.
No, I mean, it was so moist, I mean, it was just, and, and it certainly could happen again in the future, that's.
Okay, so here's the, the schedule anticipating a May twenty-first bond vote. I'll say a successful May twenty-first bond vote. After six months of design, submitting the, the plans to SED for review. Right now, there's a backlog of nine months at SED for review. So we could anticipate in August twenty-twenty, building permit. Send the items out to bid. Decide on which items in the scope we're going to award. Hopefully, we get everything we want. Start construction costs in twenty, or start construction, construction in twenty-twenty of October. And, um, twelve to sixteen months, the project will be complete. It's important, um, that it be completed at that time because then I will be able to file final expenditure reports and have building aid kick in at the right year so that we can continue our tax-neutral projection. So this timeline is important. If we get our building permits earlier, we can send bids out earlier and start construction earlier. But right now, this is based on the current, um, State Ed Department backlog.
And that could change.
And that could change.
It could get worse. It keeps getting worse, it seems like.
It could get worse, right now, they're, they're, they have a new thing, they're, they're trying that they're, um, well, they're sending review work out to con, uh, contractors, they're subbing it out. And that nine months was a lot longer in the past. They've hired people, they're subbing out now. It, it could reduce. Let's just say it will. So now we're talking about financing this project. Right now, where I'm going to say as of our six-thirty eighteen, uh, year end, we had seven hundred sixty-seven thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars in our capital reserve, eight hundred seventy-two thousand eight forty in our repair reserve. We would expect a full fifteen years of building aid once I file the expenditure report by the end of twenty-twenty-one to match the debt schedule. We're going to have four years of the project in bond anticipation notes, which are short-term debt. So I'm going to go right to the next slide because it, um, it gives a better picture of the financing.
Just a quick question, Ann, I'm sorry, sorry. Um, when you say estimated building aid full for fifteen years to match debt schedule, so that means that once you submit the, construction's complete, you submit the paperwork, we get some percent aid on the total expenditure and for fifteen years, is that?
Yes, the payments are amortized over fifteen years.
Perfect, and that's the length of debt that you would actually take out to do the.
Correct.
Perfect, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is the, um, the schedule that we're going to look at that shows how we can have this referendum be tax-neutral. We're working on the nineteen-twenty budget, that's the first line, the six-thirty twenty-twenty year. That's the end of nineteen-twenty school year. Those are the roof bonds and the roof bond interest and the roof bond building aid allocated to that project for the nineteen-twenty year. There won't be any change because we're still going to be under review at the State Ed Department. So we're not going to have any construction costs to pay for. For the next four years, I'm proposing that we float bond anticipation notes, which is the short-term debt because we still have four years left on those roof bonds. So if you look here, in twenty-four, twenty-five is when we would bond. See the difference in principal payments when you have a band and when you have a bond? You're really paying a lot of principal when you're issuing and paying off a bond. The interest is close. But it's the principal that is going to help us have a bridge between bond issues. So the bridge where we're having bond anticipation notes is what's highlighted. The building aid would kick in, in twenty-one, twenty-two if we're on that schedule that I showed you earlier. So in the last column, the additional local share is the additional cash payments that we would have to inject into those years in order to make this tax-neutral. That to.
What does additional local share mean? I don't, I'm sorry.
That is what I'm calling what we would have to come up with during that overlap period.
To make it tax-neutral.
To make it tax-neutral.
That's what we would have to come up with out of our budget, so that, is that?
Either out of our budget, but then it wouldn't be tax-neutral because those four years would increase about eight dollars for a four hundred thousand dollar assessment, okay? But we don't want to do that, we want this to be tax-neutral. We have the debt dropping off in twenty-twenty-four and we can have our bonds sold in twenty-twenty-four at the end of the year. So how are we going to deal with the overlap? The overlap for the four years is a total of ninety-three thousand eight fourteen. We have some sources of funds other than the reserve because keep in mind too that we're using our capital reserve in order to pay for part of the project. We will borrow for the remaining part of the project. The difference is still in those overlap years of short-term debt that we would have to come up with almost a hundred thousand dollars. We have it in other pockets that we'd have to discuss, the board would discuss where you would want which source of funds. We have seventy-five thousand dollars earmarked for space consideration. In this referendum is space consideration in the district office in Mabel Merritt. That seventy-five thousand is a direct result of district office and the modulators that were demolished four years ago. Those were proceeds that we got from the, the damage to the two structures. So we saved that money with the intent that we would use it in the future for space consideration. The reason why we have the language classes in Mabel Merritt is because they used to be in the modulators and they were moved. So that seventy-five is, um, a real appropriate use for this project.
Where is that seventy-five currently? Is it in, in its own?
It's in a reserve.
Reserve?
It's in the, it's in the capital reserve.
It's in the capital reserve.
But separate from the seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand. There's, think of accounts, if you, if, if you will, there's different, uh, bank accounts, but they're not real, you know, they're just accounts. There's the capital reserve for seven hundred sixty-seven thousand, there's the repair reserve for eight hundred and sixty-two thousand. We have the endowment fund, still has sixty-six thousand dollars in it, we have.
Which can also be used for buildings and grounds.
That, um, we have the seventy-five thousand dollars for space consideration.
Yeah.
We have pockets, we have pockets of savings that we have and, um, these are appropriate one-time-use items where these funds could be used. If you take the seventy-five from there, you have just short of, of twenty-five thousand dollars that, um, I'm confident that we can come up with. Even pulling out twenty-five thousand dollars to put towards the repair of the bus lift from the repair fund. That's an, an appropriate use. So it's possible, as you can see from this. And again, this is projecting years from now. There's risk, there's interest rate risk. I don't really know what's going to happen to the interest rates. But again, at that point, we can make determination, are we going to, do we have more fund balance coming in the next two years? Probably. Will we have, um, at that time, you can choose to strike more things from the referendum, take the alternates off the list, take other things off the list. Decisions will still be made years from now. Decisions will still be made years from now based on, on the economy and what the bids come in for and what the interest rates are. As of right now, with the projections that we know, this is the situation.
What, maybe it was on the page previously? So the plan is, what's the total bond amount?
The total bond amount is one, the total referendum...
The total referendum, sorry, wrong word.
Is 2.3 million.
2.3. So 1.6 we're going to fund with that and the, I can't even do the math.
And the other $700,000 from the capital reserve.
Is going to be capital reserve, leaving stub end of 67 in there-ish.
Right.
All right.
And anything that may come over the next two years if the board decides to put that into the reserve fund for maybe the next project that comes along.
Yep.
But we still have over $800,000 in the repair reserve.
Okay.
Right.
Part of that repair reserve is earmarked for the field...
The turf replacement.
It's like 100-something?
I don't know exactly. At the time that we installed the turf, it was 1 to 200,000. I don't have a new quote on that, but it's certainly not going to be...
It's not the entire thing.
It's not going to be $800,000, I can tell you that.
One thing that I found really helpful was the walkthrough that Nabeel took us on so that we could really see, I could really see all of these, the list, and really understand what they are. I'm sure this is in your take the budget on the road plans, but inviting people in to walk the grounds to see what the bond refer, what the referendum really entails and what it's meant to do is probably, and I don't know if people will take you up on that or not, but I think it would be helpful if they had questions.
We should at least offer it, and that's in the plans, to offer a couple of opportunities for people to walk around with Nabeel.
Yeah.
Perhaps Ann and myself as well, and ask questions and see the area specifically. In addition to that, the, whatever presentation we're using in budget presentations should include, whether it be video or images of the spaces that we're talking about. Obviously, we're, we're not there yet. You'll see that as we, as we go along.
Yeah.
But we want to make sure we're illustrating for folks why this work is necessary and allow them plenty of space to ask questions of, of the individuals who are involved.
Yep. Good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
So just what, as you prepare this to post, I think making someplace explicit what the bond is for and maybe, like you don't see the $2.4 million anywhere and just...
We want to make sure they do.
Just make sure, because even I was kind of going through, but that would be the one other thing I would...
You've got it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
That was really worth so far.
Thank you, Ann.
Thorough. That was good.
It was good.
It was good.
It's a big deal.
Organized.
Big chunk.
Very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to committee minutes. The minutes from the wellness committee that was held on December 17th are there for our viewing. Any communication from the public at this time?
Actually, I have a question on the minutes. Sorry. Can I do that?
Yeah.
Fantastic. What's the, what's the PNA survey?
Prevention Needs Assessment.
Okay.
So every two years, if I'm not mistaken, through the Prevention Council, we administer the Prevention Needs Assessment, which is an assessment, students take it anonymous or vet.
Okay.
And it's a assessment of substance use and abuse or misuse.
Yeah.
Including drugs and alcohol.
Yeah.
So I believe that's what's referenced in the wellness, the results of that survey we received. The Wellness Committee minutes were just posted, I think, today or yesterday. So I believe our school staff is beginning to work with the results of that. And we are meeting, I don't have it fresh in mind, John, so excuse me, but I know we're meeting with the folks who facilitated the survey because there's some technical aspects of it before we take it and begin to present it publicly.
Oh, is it granted?
Share the results, yes. We want to make sure we understand the technical detail of the report because some of it is comparative to our students in the past or prior years that it's been taken, also national norms and trends. So it's important at an administrative level that we're understanding of all of that, have a chance to come to understand the survey design and how it's being reported and some of the statistics that are incorporated into it. So we're fully prepared when we begin to speak to it with...
Sure.
We've had that presented at board meetings in the past. I assume we'll have it as well.
I'm wondering if that, we're kind of using that last board workshop for social emotional learning, that certainly would play into that. But I'm trying to also be wary of not making that so big with so many reports that we're here all night in a meeting in June. So we'll find a space to make sure it's shared with you. Certainly, if you, we'll make room if that's something you want.
Yeah, I think it was like, there was, it was shared here at the board meeting, it was also shared at like a PTA meeting. It was shared in multiple venues so people could...
CTC.
See it, CTC meetings, see it, ask questions. Yeah.
I forget what grade they start that at.
I think it's eighth.
It was eighth.
Yeah.
Because my two high schoolers, I know...
Eighth, 10th, and 12th.
Took that in PE class, actually. Right, Andrew? You're shaking your head.
It was a fun PE class.
Okay, any communication? No? Okay, moving on to the information reports from December and November. Those are there for our viewing to review and approve following meeting. Consent agenda minutes, the minutes from the December 18 workshop in addition to the December 27 emergency meeting. May I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? The grants were just recently, or those were on actually on Friday as well. Sorry. I just looked at them again, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Questions or comments? Thank you, Ann, for correcting the date.
Sure.
We took care of that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to new business, Ms. Familara.
This is the CSE, CPSC recommendations. The recommended action is, be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the committee on, committees on special education and preschool special, special education as presented. Excuse me. May I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any communication from the three members of our audience? Yeah. Okay, with that said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Did you have a question?
I have a question.
Comment.
I do have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm going to ask. We had had the conversation about the sexual harassment policy, and there was some consideration about definition. Awesome. Thank you.
As well as just overall, I know things have been kind of crazy, but I believe they were working on the review of the code of conduct and the athletic.
We're still anticipating that, to have that by the end of the month.
Okay.
So there should be something before the board shortly there. We have to give our attorney a little bit of time to look through that. He's anticipating it as well. So that work is moving right along. The sexual harassment policy, I have to follow up on, so.
Thank you.
And just while we're talking about policy, we are expecting to get the policy book back from Erie Bosse's soon. That's what I heard last, so.
And is that the Delta? What is, is that them like going through the whole thing and telling us what we need?
Where we have a, we have a course of action that we'll be bringing to you, a recommended course of action, I believe, to try to get some good work done this year. But yes, we'll have to, ultimately, there's some work on the front end, so a recommendation we'll have for the board, and then we'll come back and start to meet regularly as a policy committee.
Cool.
Great. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.